Call me in order for the November 15, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Dixon has an excused absence.
Thank you, and the individual invited for invocation is not present, correct? Anyone like to do the invocation this evening? I feel inspired. Yes, Councilman O'Neil.
Please stand. Lord, we thank you for this gathering. We thank you for the ability to meet and discuss and exchange ideas. We ask that you bless us with wisdom. We ask that you give us the guidance that you, only you can provide in order to give back and serve our residents. We ask you watch over those people all across the globe who do not have the same freedoms that those, especially on one of the discussion items tonight, who are fighting for those freedoms. So, we thank you, and we ask these things in thy name. Amen.
Okay, please face the flag. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have called presentations this evening. The first is a proclamation recognizing the Harbor Department Code Enforcement Team for receiving the most innovative program in 2022 by the California Association of Code Enforcement Officers. Sir Blank, would you like to come forward? Oh, perfect. Come, please, please come forward. Only Harbor Department code is so relaxed, by the way. Every other code department. Okay, I'll read this to you. And Matt, you're supervisor, correct?
Correct.
And when did you take that position?
2011. With the Harbor Department in 2018.
Perfect. You've been here for a long time. Great. Whereas the city of Newport Beach Harbor Department was created in July of 2017. And whereas part of establishing the Harbor Department was the creation of Harbor Code Enforcement Division in 2018, whereas since its inception, the Harbor Code Enforcement Division has significantly improved, the expanded contributing greatly, improved and expanded, contributing greatly to the overall mission of the Harbor Department, which is keeping the harbor clean, safe, and well enjoyed. Whereas the Harbor Code Enforcement Division team members act as ambassadors, continually striving to provide excellent service and education to the Harbor community. Whereas members of the Harbor Code Enforcement Team are encouraged to participate and contribute to the activities of the California Association of Code Enforcement Officers. And whereas the Code Enforcement Officers commend their, excuse me, convene their annual Code Enforcement meeting on October 25, 2022. And whereas the city of Newport Beach Harbor Code Enforcement Division was awarded the 2022 Most Innovative Program by the CA CEO, that's the Code Enforcement Association, at their code conference. Now therefore, I, Kevin Muldoon, Mayor of the city of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize the Harbor Department Code Enforcement Division, including Code Enforcement Supervisor Matt Costleom and Code Enforcement Officers Stephen Estrada, Jeffrey Goldfarb, Lenora Piana Sanchez, and all the Harbor Service workers and their Harbor Services lead colleagues on this auspicious achievement. Would you? I would like to invite you and anyone else who I just read off, including Stephen. It says yourself and Lenora, an opportunity to address the council.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Well, really quickly, on behalf of the entire Harbor Department team and Harbor Master Blank, we would just like to thank the city mayor and the city council for their support and all the resources that you have provided to us since the creation of the Harbor Department. And in addition, we'd also like to thank city manager, Assistant City Manager, City Attorney's Office, and of course, the Harbor Commission. It's been an interesting run since the creation of this department. I think one of the unique things about this award and why it resonated with the awards committee from KCO was that the focus just wasn't on enforcement. It was actually about the totality of what we do within the Harbor Department and on the water. And the application really, and the nomination focused on education and how a significant portion of our time is spent on education. And just a fraction of our activities are actual enforcement, warning notices and citations and whatever other activities we are involved with. And so, the committee that awarded us the nomination was really pleased with the fact that we, our focus is on education rather than just enforcement. So, it's a tribute to our entire department team and how much time they spend on educating the public.
I just thought of your logo. It should be "Only a fraction on infractions." Yes. Yeah. Well, I'm sure a couple of us are going to want to speak. Councilman Duffield?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I have to say, of all people that want, that are excited about this, shouldn't be me. I violated every, as a kid, thing there was on the bay we could possibly do. We waterskied naked. We did everything we could. And to think that I have anything involved with wanting to have rules and such is pretty different. But, no kidding aside, all kidding aside, it is phenomenal that we finally turned the corner and we are abiding by our codes and laws and amendments and all the things that we work so hard up here to do. You're the teeth in what it is that we're trying to do up here. And a lot of the audience always says to us, "Well, how are you going to do it? How are you going to make that happen?" Well, you're the guy that makes it happen. And I thank you so much, and we look forward to the future, and keep it up, man. Keep doing a great job, and we'll keep giving, hopefully these folks will keep giving you more budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Avery?
I wasn't quite the skull flaw that Duffy was, but I did have my issues on the harbor as well. And back in the day, when there was some butt kicking going on for guys like us. It's something how the Harbor Department is, you know, the concept, to your point, has gone to visitor-serving. I mean, that's the most important thing. We're out there serving, you're out there serving, and people come to the harbor for enjoyment, and there are very few, in my view, because I'm on the harbor like Duffy a lot, and people, very few that are acting out and totally off, out of control in terms of their behavior, speed, whatever. And the most important thing is welcoming people to our harbor, and the professionalism of the group is key and obvious to all of us up here. And I'm sure people who come in contact with you, I know Paul gets lots of positive emails. And that in itself adds to people obeying the law or codes and the rest of it, because it's the broken windows theory in a way. A harbor that's clean, well-run, everyone's enjoying it, and it's a good vibe, quote-unquote. Good things happen, and the sort of the darkness kind of stays at bay. So, that's a big reason to have just a fraction of time on the codes. But I know you're all trained to see when you have to step in, those rare times when you have to step in. And that's obviously needed as well. But from what I see on the harbor, it's just nothing but good things happening on, at all levels. And certainly, Harbor Department and Code Enforcement is a big part of that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll invite any councilmembers who want to join me for a picture, and we definitely need to have Stephen, Jeffrey, Lenora, yourself, Paul, and anyone else who wants to come forward for a big group photo.
That's good.
Okay, the next is George Hilkeema. May I please come forward? Did I pronounce that correct?
Hello?
Did I pronounce that? Hilkeema?
Hilkeema.
Oh, Hilkeema.
Yep.
All right, Hilkeema, I like it. All right. Whereas George Hilkeema has a longstanding member of the community and an active member of the Newport Harbor boating community. Whereas based on exemplary knowledge and seamanship, George Hilkeema has been an active member of the Newport Mooring Association for over 25 years. Whereas George regularly reviews harbor policies, procedures, and projects for the betterment of Newport Harbor. Whereas George's latest contribution is the invention and deployment of the particle separator as an instrumental device to protect the city of Newport Beach's vessel pump-out systems, saving the city money by avoiding costly repairs and keeping the pumps operational for use by the boating community. Pretty cool. Whereas George continues to inspect and maintain the vessel pump-out systems to the benefit of the city of Newport Beach Harbor, sorry, the city, Newport Beach Harbor and boating community. Whereas George continues to be dedicated observer and contributor to the availability and reliability of the vessel pump-out systems. Now therefore, I, Kevin Muldoon, Mayor of the city of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize George Hilkeema. Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a couple of words?
I would.
Great.
Issue, it seems, had been with respect to this particle separator is that people pump bilges, and if they pick up a screw or a bolt or some metal object, it'll get into the pump, which is a peristaltic pump. It flattens the hose with a roller, and it punches the hose, and then it's done for it. You have to shut the pump down. And I met a man by the name of Noel Pluchak, who's been our faithful repairman on these pumps for, I don't know, 10 years or more. And I met him on the dock, and he was working on these pumps, and he showed me what happened when you put a screw through that. So, I got to thinking about it, and worked with him, and figured out a way to solve that problem, and made a prototype or two, and tested them, and showed Noel, and got in touch with the city. In the first round, I proposed a program, and I was, they sent my proposal to the risk manager and the lawyer, and wanted to know how much insurance I got.
Welcome to government.
Yeah. Then John Kapler called me and was interested in it, and immediately, he agreed to put three of these on the city pumps, and indeed, they worked for three months, and then the city bought five of them. We've had no pump failures for a year and a half. Just this morning, I installed one at the Balboa Bay Club. So, anyway, so it's been, it's been a pleasure working with the city folks. But I also like to thank my friend and boating friend, I've looked after his boat for years. He's also a patent lawyer. Got me two patents on the device.
I was going to ask you if you got a patent. Wow, that's great. I'm glad you did. Speaking of patents, Councilman Duffield, do you have a couple of remarks?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. Look, let's put it in perspective here. George, it was costing us $30,000 a year, minimum, minimum, when these things would break. Thirty grand. So, George comes along with this silly invention that is so stupid simple, you just want to go, "Well, that will never work." And it works so well, there's no moving parts, you know, it's easy to design something really complicated, but George took it to the level of a true invention that is simple, inexpensive to make, and good for him, and I hope he sells them for billions of dollars. But the reality is, he saved our city $30,000 a year, minimum, with this invention. So, George, keep up the good work. Try to find something else that you can invent to save 30 grand. Thank you very much. Good job.
And I thank you, Councilman Duffield. Councilman Avery?
Well, George and I are neighbors on the water. We both suffer from an affliction. We enjoy wooden boats and all their trials and tribulations. But when I was newly around the council five years ago, we, dealing with the mooring association, I remember a meeting that I was nominally chairing, and there were about 200 folks from the mooring association. I'm sure George rounded a lot of them up. And having George kind of lead the charge was daunting to me. And so, you've done such a great job of representing that community, and everybody knows and appreciates you. It's, you're basically an institution on the harbor, and you know every bit of the culture and where people are at. And it's really important that your involvement in the community in the past and going forward, because you're sort of a north star for what's going on in the harbor, especially for the mooring community. So, thank you.
Thank you. I will be 87 in December. And I know I will admit it if my portrait appears in the landing along with the other characters of Balboa.
Well, George, can we take a, speaking of portrait, would we take a picture with you up by the flag? May we take a picture with you by the flags? Great. Okay, Madam Clerk, notes to the public.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Thank you. Now it's time for council announcements or reports from councilmembers on committee activities, and the time for councilmembers to request an A1 item to be placed on future agenda. Councilman O'Neil, do you have any announcements or reports?
Yeah, real briefly, I was able to attend a meeting up in Spyglass Hill to talk, just kind of stay of the city. Was able to speak to the Newport Beach Foundation's St. English Citizens Program. Attended with some of our fellow councilmembers, the Citizen and Businessman of the Year presented by the chamber. Is able to also bring another Girl Scout troop through the city, actually, I think two, city council chambers and then city hall. Had a finance committee meeting that was great. Spoke to the National League of Young Men, which was, actually, it was the moms that I was speaking to. It's a great organization, very charitable, designed around moms and their high school sons. And so, came in and spoke there, really fun. And then upcoming on Thursday, Newport Beach will be hosting the TCA planning session over at Marina Park. And I also just like to say, happy Thanksgiving.
Great. Councilman Duffield?
Well, I ran my last water committee, water quality committee meeting. Does that mean anything to you?
A lot.
Yeah. So, very sad. Had it for many years, but all our water is very quality-oriented. So, all looks good there. And whoever takes it over, I think it should be.
Brad, right now?
Just saying. Brad. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brenner?
Mini, but it's not really important.
Okay. Yes, you are out in town. I'm sure you've done a lot of stuff not to mention. Councilman Avery?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Orange County Sanitation District Board meeting and also the finance committee meeting. Thank you.
Great. Mayor Proton Blom?
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
And I'm going to copy Councilman Brenner. I did a lot of stuff, but nothing worth reporting. Okay, Madam Clerk, please read the notes regarding public comments on the consent calendar.
This is the time in which councilmembers may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 19. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a councilmember, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed on our consent calendar are considered to be routine, will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Councilmembers have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Councilman O'Neil, do you have any items to pull from the consent calendar or conflict announce related items 1 through 19?
I'd like to pull four.
Okay, item four. Councilman Duffield? Councilman Brenner?
None.
Councilman Avery?
I have none.
Mayor Proton Blom?
I'd like to pull item six, and I have a recusal for real property interests on number five.
Okay, and for myself, I have two recusals related to former real conflicts in wireless, but you never know. Just to be safe, I'm accusing myself on item number six, I'm sorry, excuse me, item number seven and item number eight related to potential business conflicts. And I'm going to lodge a no vote, only to the objection to the MOU, not to the naming rights for a great man, on item number 15. Is there a motion?
There's a motion to move the balance of consent with the itsy-bitsy changes to the minutes on item one. Councilman O'Neil pulling item four, myself pulling item six, a recusal for myself for real property on item five, a recusal by the mayor on item seven and item eight due to business interests, and lodging a no vote on item 15 with the mayor as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. We have a motion. I'll second that motion. Public comments on the consent calendar, the items that were not pulled, items 1 through 19, now is the time to come forward. Okay, seeing no one, I'll bring it back for a vote. We have a motion. Oh, yes.
Hi, my name is Laura Curran. I have the agenda here, because I couldn't find any blue ones outside. The consent calendar, people have been asking me recently, what is the consent calendar, and can the public speak on it? So, the consent calendar items that, where the staff has, has given the city council a report, and there are 19 items this time. For the public, all 19 of these titles are listed. Tonight, there are several of interest. Number four is about one-way streets, and that's been pulled, so we'll talk about it. I think this, I also want to comment on number 13, which is a contract for maintenance at Back Bay, for the conservancy at the Newport Bay Restoration, and I want to commend the city for investing $300,000 in the contract. The Back Bay Conservancy in Big Canyon Restoration is a huge accomplishment for the city, and we should be supporting the ongoing restoration, and residents can volunteer as part of that. I want to note that there is an item here for the public of 14, number 14, there is purchase of additional police vehicles. If you read the notes, it says we're buying police vehicles, that it costs $50,000 extra in this item, but actually, the overall cost is $300,000. That's probably a good price to buy police vehicles, but I think for the public, it's important to understand when we are buying additional vehicles. Also tonight, item 17, we'll be talking about appointments to the General Plan Committee, and there are items related to the budget for items number 18 and 19. So, for the public, I think those are important items to read about and be prepared to ask questions about, if not at this opportunity in the future, because several of these items will come back again for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Okay, seeing no other requests to speak, we have a motion and a second. Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance titles for items three and five. Ordinance number 2022-22, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach approving a zoning code amendment for the Lido House Hotel located at 3300 Newport Boulevard and 475 32nd Street. And ordinance 2022-24, in amending section 12.52.040, Corona Del Mar of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to designate portions as, oh, did I delete the wrong one? Portions as one-way, hold on one moment, oops. Amending the municipal code sections 1.12.020C and 5.12.230E to remove references to licensed supervisor and licensed inspector. The motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, on to number four. Staff?
So, Mr. Mayor, I don't need a staff report.
Okay, great.
So, just real quick, the reason I pulled it, one-way streets tends to be a pretty big deal in Corona Del Mar, and it's a long discussion point. So, the, I guess the question I've got and the reason I pulled it, the, when we, when we are, so we've looked at this, it seemed to have worked out Fernleaf. Fernleaf definitely has that unique characteristic to it. So, now we're looking at doing it also in that same area, the same block area for Dahlia and Golden, and Golden Rod. So, the, I'm just trying to figure out, this is, this is sort of the self-contained amount that we're even remotely looking at right now. I mean, a much bigger, if we went bigger than this, it would need to, I would expect a pretty substantial study process, but I, like, this has always been a long discussion point in CDM, and so I just want to make sure I understand, when we're doing this, it's kind of like very limited in scope, not, not beyond this, or at least any intention of doing this, at least any, anytime soon.
That's correct. There has been several discussions in the past about a much larger one-way system in Corona Del Mar, but it's gotten mixed feelings within the community as to support or not support, and it would be a large undertaking. So, in this instance, we're talking about just the one corner of Corona Del Mar, if you will, that's kind of bound by Bayside and Ocean and Marguerite and Carnation, so we're focusing just on that corner.
Okay. All right. I plan on supporting it, but I wanted to make sure I understood it, because I think I've been up here for six years, and I know that they've been talking about it much longer than that. So, all right, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman O'Neil. Okay, seeing no other requests to speak. Public comments on this item, please come forward. If you plan to speak after Ms. Curran, please come to the podium now.
Hi, item number four is regarding one-way streets at Fernleaf, Dahlia, and it's the third one, Golden Rod. What block is this in?
100.
This is, so this is in the 200 block.
We have a slide they're going to put up that shows the area.
I just bring this up because this has been a topic of much discussion in Corona Del Mar. If you're interested in this topic, this is the introduction of this topic. You will have an opportunity also on November 29th to comment on this topic. You can also come to the Corona Del Mar Residents Association meeting every Thursday of the month, including this Thursday at 7:30 at Oasis, and ask questions about this from people who are there or familiar with the topic. CDMRA would like to thank Councilmember Brenner for hosting many, many discussions about this topic, reading many emails. Do you have an estimate, Joy, how many emails you've gotten? And listen, you know, really trying to help the residents understand the pros and cons. This is an important issue in Corona Del Mar. Some people think it's worked out great, some people aren't so in favor of it, but it does bear study. Also, there is an item, what number is it, for Mariners, where there were one-way slow down strips in Mariners, and I believe the council, the recommendation is to keep the current traffic calming in place. Is that correct?
That's on Current Business Tonight, yes.
But that's tonight. So, for residents that are interested in this topic, I would also encourage them to read the report about the Mariners' traffic calming, to understand the ideas that Mr. Bryan and Mr. Webb will bring forward, because one-way streets are one option, but the real issue is about slowing the speed. So, the traffic calming in Mariners is relevant, in my view, to these types of discussions, because safety is really brought about when you slow down the speed. So, we need to be thinking about that as well. So, I bring this up in the consent calendar so that people have more color for the public and have an opportunity to learn about it. and have an opportunity to learn about it and how it might affect them. Thank you.
Thank you. And staff, this is public comments, not back and forth. Any other comments? Please come forward.
Mayor Muldoon and members of the council, as Laura said, this is an ordinance, so it'll probably be coming back for a second reading two weeks from now. I did notice in the staff report, there seemed to be overwhelming support on Golden Rod for this, but at least in the staff report, it looked like there was less than 50% support in the petition on Dahlia. And perhaps, as council members, you would be wondering if staff did additional outreach or notified everybody on Dahlia that they know that this ordinance is in the works by the time it comes for the second reading. It was not obvious from the staff report, and the number of signatures from there was pretty small. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, do we send out... do we send out notices?
We certainly can. We usually leave these to the residents to walk out with a petition and get signatures. I think we did get a fair amount of signatures. I think more, definitely more than 50%, but it's generally left to the residents to do the footwork and get the signatures. So, we can go back to those and contact them prior to coming back on the 29th.
Okay. Councilman Brenner?
I might just add that that's a very short block. It's not as long as Golden Rod. There aren't as many residents there. And I know the residents on Fernleaf have walked all the houses on both of the other streets and talked to the residents.
Okay. So, we'll bring it back, or it is back. Do you have a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion on this staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, great. Motion made by Councilman Brenner, seconded by Councilman O'Neal. Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for 2022-24, amending section 12.52.040 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to designate portions of streets as one-way traffic only. The motion carries six-zero.
Okay, thank you. So, item number six has been pulled, and remind me again, who was pulled by?
By myself.
Pulled by Mayor Pro Tem Blom.
Thank you. And we need no kind of staff report on this. And the reason I pulled this, actually, Jim and I are in perfect alignment on this idea, and the title of it is condemning the government of Iran, which I fully support. I just don't really know the City Council's position on condemning other sovereign nations. I think what's going on over there is atrocious and horrible on so many levels, but it starts getting us into a point where, where do we draw the line, and what is the role of local government? And I actually do not believe the role of local government is to get involved in national affairs. It's to take care of the people of Newport Beach and things that directly affect the people of Newport Beach. And even though this is disgusting and horrible, and wholeheartedly, I would do anything I can personally to stop this type of atrocity, I don't think it's our place up here to start condemning other nations, because then we get into kind of a waterfall effect with who are we not condemning? Is it every national issue that we're looking at, or every foreign issue where we start looking at and saying, hey, you know, I condemn these people now and this? And unfortunately, I think that that is why there is multiple forms of government that go up to the federal level and down to the local level. Our concern and our focus needs to be within our borders and things that affect, you know, our residents, our businesses, and our children. And so, that's why I am lodging a no vote on this. It's certainly not because I don't condemn the government of Iran for what they've done. I just, I don't believe this is our place. Thank you.
But you, Councilman Avery.
Yes, I've met a good number of Ukrainian people in my travels, and of course, I completely support them, but I'll be voting no because for some of the reasons that Mr. Blom mentioned, but just basically, we really need to remain laser-focused on what's going on with the city and, you know, put all our attention there and not get sort of hinged out on these issues that really have nothing to do about our business here. But certainly, we appreciate it when, you know, NGOs get together and lead protests and, you know, freedom of speech and all the rest of it, and I would join in if there was one here in town. So, just so people understand the spirit of my vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman O'Neal.
Thank you. So, I put out a personal statement on this issue. I tend to agree with Councilmember Blom, and so, I'll be voting to abstain on this one. The... I think the one thing to note, it looks like we're going to be having actually a solid peaceful protest on this issue coming up soon. Residents in Newport have been working with Sean Levin over in RAC and Senior Services as well as our PD. So, the date's not 100% certain, but we're working through it. So, it should be within the next 20, 30 days. And so, I just recommend if folks would like to join that peaceful protest that... which will be in the Civic Center area, that they keep the areas open. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Brenner?
Actually, I'm in agreement on this. I feel like there are many instances where politics could be commented on up here at the dais and probably should not be. And in this case, I will vote no as well.
Thank you. Before we go to the public, I have many friends who are of Iranian descent, some of whom were born in Iran before the revolution and live here now. And I understand my colleagues' position. You know, this is an opportunity that I will be taking to vote against this tyrannical regime that killed roughly 1,500,000 innocents in 2019 and has alleged 15,000 current captives, women who want to live in freedom and men and women who want to have their voices heard. And, you know, my prayers are with them. It's horrendous what these leaders said that they want to do to the women before they execute them to allegedly prevent them from going to heaven. And I think these tyrants are in for a big awakening when they meet the Lord on their own judgment day. And what they have in mind is not going to deter someone from entering heaven. It's really... I mean, reprehensible what the Iranian government's doing. And I understand the position that my colleagues take, but I just want to stand in solidarity with these people who want to have democracy and freedom. This item was actually agendized by Councilwoman Dixon, who is not present, so I'm sure she would echo those sentiments. Let's have public comments. Public comments on this item, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we have... it looks like a majority of people who will be voting against. I plan to vote for. So, is there a motion to vote against the item? Okay, motion to vote against the item, made by Mayor Pro Tem Blom, and is there a second by Councilman Avery? Okay, let's vote. So, I just... I will be voting no in support of the resolution essentially, and individuals will be voting yes to deny passing the resolution.
Correct.
Correct. So, thank you.
With council members... with Mayor Muldoon voting no, and Mayor and Councilmember O'Neal abstaining, the motion to not adopt the resolution passes.
Thank you. We are blessed to live in a democracy where that kind of conversation can happen. Okay, moving on next to public hearings, item number 20. Oh, you're right, excuse me. Yes, and actually, now is time for our public comments on non-agenda items. There are items that are not on the agenda this evening. Are there any? Yes, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Philip Mitchell. I am a member of the California State Society of the Sons of the American Revolution. The United States Congress in 1889 gave a charter to this organization founded on the history of the United States of America and the revolution that took place between the French and Indian War and the Treaty of Paris in 1793. We're here to say thank you to the City of Newport Beach for the flying of the American flag on its facilities and the support that the City of Newport Beach gives to Castaway Park during the Field of Honor, normally held on Memorial Day. With me is the California State President, Mr. Jim Klingler, and the president, the chapter president of the Orange County Chapter of the Sons of the American Revolution, Mr. Paul Garcia. We're here to give you a commendation. Jim?
Thank you. Thank you, Phil, and thank you, everyone. We're here to give you a certificate, a framed certificate from the National Society of the Sons of the American Revolution in appreciation of the support that you give to the activities at the Field of Honor and the displaying of the American flag. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from you, Chair? From any Orange County comments specifically? It looks like you maybe want to say a couple of words.
Only that we appreciate the city having us at the Field of Honor and with our colonial Marines and colonial men in uniform on a yearly basis, and we really appreciate that, and we look forward to this next year also. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate. It's a great event. We all make our way up the hill. It's really inspiring, and a couple of us are S.A.R.D.A.R. So, thank you for having your chapter be active and involved in patriotism and promoting it. I think it's very good for our veterans to see it. And I think it's a good occasion for us all to take a picture to receive this honor that you've given the city.
One of the things that we all... the second thing that we wanted to do tonight is to remind everybody in the room that in just a couple of years, the 250th birthday of our country, and it's going to be very active, and we want everybody to participate in this great thing. I'm sure that there's nobody here remembers what happened in the birthday, 200, the 200th birthday, but some of us won't be here for the 300th birthday. So, we're going to make a big do of it, and we thank you. And I have created and for the... for the City Council, challenge coins to that effect. And while we're down here, I'll hand those to you. Thank you very much for letting us come today.
Thank you. The honor is very appreciated. We'll come forward now.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah, it is.
Yes, public comment. Yes.
Yes. First, congratulations on your commendation. I know that I speak for a lot of people who are really appreciative of all the hard work that our City Council does for us here in Newport Beach. This is my first City Council member, first City Council meeting, so forgive me. I hope I'm not speaking out of order. But technically, my item is not on the agenda, although it is related to an agenda item a bit later. So, I may be told to sit down and wait. I totally appreciate that. But I am here because of a speed bump on Dover Drive. It was removed without notification of those of us on the street. All of us have signed saying that we wanted it. One gentleman changed his mind due to noise, which I'm sure you'll hear more about this evening. And it was removed without consulting our neighbors, and it was moved down Dover Drive onto the other side of Norfolk. And I live between West Cliff and Norfolk, and there are like five or six houses in there, and we all want it back, except for the one part-time resident who complained about it and has no children.
Could you mind bringing this up during the item, item number 22? It's definitely relevant to that item.
I will do my best to stay.
Okay.
Not everybody has the patience that I do, but we will do our best to stay.
If you have to leave, you can finish.
Oh, okay. Just quickly, I would like to see... one, I'm upset that I didn't get a chance to weigh in when my speed bump was removed, and I'm really happy that the people from Highland Drive have an opportunity to speak tonight to it. And I would just really urge you to please move it back, and I'm happy to have it in front of my house, 1016 Dover Drive. Please put it back in. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay, any other comments on non-agenda items? Yes.
Evening, or good afternoon. I just wanted to bring up again the issue of non-licensed rehab facilities and just express my concern over seemingly providing accommodations and allowing these facilities to operate illegally until they get licensed, and kind of think about the bigger picture of how the city wants the future of these facilities to come about and where the lines get drawn. I know we talked about this at the last council meeting, and there was some movement behind the scenes, which we were somewhat privy to the aftereffects of. I'd love to have it be an agenda item. I would love to understand who is monitoring, like, when a facility gets licensed, if it's not licensed for its use. Is that... is the city going to be monitoring that, or does that go back to the state? How is that regulated? And in the future, how is the city going to handle unlicensed rehab facilities by not allowing, you know, accommodation after accommodation and lengthening time? And I would like a little bit of insight as a concerned resident into that. And I don't know if there is, you know, like, how would I get that as an agenda item?
I will ask the staff member to speak to you in the back if you'd like.
Okay.
But this is the time for public comments.
Okay.
Thank you. And someone could... thank you. Next speaker, please.
So, that was my wife, Jane. I'm Eric Spitz. This is my fourth City Council meeting, talking about the same agenda item that hasn't shown up. The agenda item, which seems to concern a lot of people, is the unlicensed... I'm going to be really precise here, the unlicensed operation of drug and alcohol rehab facilities. They're open source. They're happening in our city on our watch. And since the last time you guys wrote a letter, a demand letter, to the city council, to the Scofflaw operators, but it wasn't the type that I would have expected. I would have expected a demand that they don't get to negotiate. I'm not sure why we're negotiating. I'd love to hear some explanations. It was supposed to be A1ed. I'm not sure what an A1 is, but boy, oh, boy, would we like to get some answers, because we don't get any answers. Why are these places not being treated like they are sores? They are dangerous. They are unsafe. I think there's unholy stuff going on. I think there are relationships between some of these operators and some of the people on staff and on council. And I would urge you to look into that, because nothing else makes sense. The law doesn't make sense. The way that you're treating them doesn't make sense. They're not violating anything. They're not tenants that need to be treated like tenants. Let them stay as long as they want. They just can't do what they're doing because it is illegal and dangerous. Why can't we treat this as something that is that serious? It seems to be this is the fourth time. I can't get it as an agenda item? I can't get you to respond to me? The only responses are these parries that I get from the city attorney that demonstrate that he's looking over here, and he wants me to look over there too. But I'm not. I can't stop looking at the sores. They're open source. What is the reason that we can't get any response from the people who are elected to...
been sued to, I forget how much, how many millions.
Our association.
Okay, that's a waste of your time, because he and we are following the law. Next speaker, please.
Ethical behavior.
Next speaker, please. Jim, go ahead.
Your responsibility, sir.
Go ahead, Jim. You're always here to talk.
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon, members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher, and I just wanted to comment one aspect to the previous speaker's frustration, was not necessarily with the state law, but trying to get this as an agenda item for open discussion at a council meeting. And I'd just point out, as I did in writing, according to the minutes of your last meeting, when there was non-agenda discussion of this, two of the council members asked for this to be a policy A1 item, which is not a state law. That's your own policy, and when a council member asks for that, it is supposed to come back, as I understand it, at the next meeting, not as an agenda item for, but for a majority of you, or is it three, I guess, to decide whether you want it to be an agenda item in the future. And I was surprised that with two council members asking for that vote, should this be an agenda item or not, that that did not show on the agenda, this is, this, tonight, for people to decide, should this be an item or not? And I'm not sure why that happened. You might want to inquire, but I thought when that request is made, it comes back for a vote, and it did not. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public speakers, non-agenda items?
My name's Laura Curran. I'd like to comment on the issue of drug rehab operation. This issue goes back to 2008, so when residents express frustration, it's because they've had to continually remind the city of the city's opportunities to enforce, of the enforcement opportunities that are in city code and, and in state code. Last November, the city held a meeting at the library organized by Councilmember Dixon, Councilmember Brenner, with multiple staff members, along with Supervisor Foley, Assembly Member Cadi Petrin Norris, and Senator Min. The city said that they would take action, they would enforce against integral facilities which were operating illegally, and any number of things, and the residents are frustrated because the residents continually have to bring these issues of non-licensed operators to the staff and to council for action, rather than the council or the staff pursuing these things actively, as was promised as part of the lawsuit settlement many years ago. So, specifically on the update, for example, this is a really important topic, of the same level of importance as homelessness in Newport Beach, but there are never updates in the city manager update about this topic. So, I'll give you one update. In Corona del Mar at Miramar Recovery, we've asked for over two years, who is the licensed operator of Miramar Recovery? The city still has not provided the licensed information or copy showing who is the licensed operator. We've been given multiple names, but this cannot be true, because the state tells us it's one person, the city tells us it's another, and the licenses are not transferable. Second, the operator at Miramar is operating a pump which violates the city's noise ordinance. We reported this over three weeks ago. This is still in excess of the noise ordinance, and they've been given extra time to continue to fix this item, which has broken repeatedly for over 15 years. So, since they're violating the city's noise ordinance, they're also violating a city code, which they are not allowed to do as a condition of their state license. Has the city reported that they're violating the noise ordinance to the state? The residents really look to the city to be proactive on our behalf with DHCS and DSS. Instead, we find ourselves being the people driving these issues and, again, pointing out the, the clear opportunities to enforce, especially since the city of Costa Mesa successfully had its ordinance related to enforcement of integral facilities upheld in the Ninth Circuit. So, the Ninth Circuit upheld that cities could write ordinances related to integral facilities and enforce them, and Newport continues to say, we can't do anything. So, this is why the residents are frustrated, and we ask that as we go forward, we re-energize our approach to this, and we engage with our cities, Costa Mesa, Newport, Huntington Beach, Laguna, which are all facing the same issues and want to invest in this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Please.
We can all hear you. We can all hear you. You come to every meeting, we hear you from the back. We're not, I'm talking to you, how am I ignoring you? I'm giving you more attention than these people who are respectful. I'm giving you way more attention than they're getting.
I don't feel respected.
That might be something you got to deal with yourself, because I'm, I'm being respectful and I'm listening. I'm answering your question. When we're done, I'm going to ask the city attorney to give an update on what we can and can't do. It is what the law says. The Costa Mesa ordinance is based on our ordinance. We went to trial, had to spend a lot of money to preserve our ordinance, and we're a complaint-based city. We appreciate complaints, we take them, code does, and looks into them, and I believe that our staff is doing it to the best of the can of the law. Councilwoman Brenner?
Could I just add a little bit here? When I was elected four years ago, this was the issue that I was most concerned about and most aggressive in trying to resolve. When I think about my time coming to an end, it is the most regret that I have on this topic of anything else. Diane and Duffy and I have been the drivers to try and get something done in the city, and I have talked to Diane extensively about in her new position, how I will do everything possible to work with her at the state level to try to get some effective remedy. It is absolutely unconscionable that our citizens have to deal with this, and it destroys the quality of life in their neighborhoods. I also would like to hear from Aaron to tell us what we have done, and I would beg any of the new council members or the returning council members to take this as seriously as possible and do something to protect our community.
Sir?
So, just briefly, you know, the city has the ability to regulate certain facilities, but we don't have the ability to regulate state-licensed facilities, and the facilities that are being complained about this evening are, are regulated by the state. The state's issued license to these facilities. The state's put in the codes that the city's unable to regulate them any differently than we regulate single-family homes, and over, over time, we've done a lot to try to get those laws to be changed, and we've been unable to, and I'm hopeful that, you know, perhaps Councilmember Dixon, when she gets up to the state, that she'll be able to, you know, push forward some bills that will allow for, you know, more local control, because I think everyone's frustrated that there's an absence of local control. The facilities that we're able to regulate, we don't really get significant complaints about them. We get a complaint here or there, but pretty much, we don't get any complaints about the facilities that are regulated by the city. It's always the state facilities that we don't have the ability to regulate that we get the complaints about.
I'm not talking about regulated facilities.
Okay. Any other pub, are there any other public comments on non-agenda items? Are there any other public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, seen none. We're on to item number, is it 20?
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmember. Simone Jurdis, you're Community Development Director, and with me is Jocelyn Perez, our Assistant Planner. Tonight's item is just a cleanup item for our local coastal plan and our zoning code, and I think we have a really brief PowerPoint for this agenda item. So, real quick, what we're trying to do is just clean up our code, and this is regarding non-conforming densities, and so you have properties that are legal non-conforming and are, unfortunately, back in 2006, when we adopted our zoning code, we missed a few pieces to that code, so we're going back and cleaning that up. I'm sorry, it's 2010. And so, one of our changes to allow people to maintain their property, and if they're non-conforming, due to density. And the last final change, and this will be kind of our last slide, is, you know, you have properties that have a, an original setback, older properties that have an original setback of five feet, and then when we adopted our code in 2010, that setback for any additions changed to six feet. So, now you have this jog, an unusual jog in a property, and so it doesn't make sense to allow that jog to continue. And so, what we're trying to do is just clean up that code, so allow property owners, if they want to put an addition to their home, they can maintain that five-foot setback and not have to move it one more foot to six feet. And that's the extent of this change. That's all.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions from the dais? Okay, seen none. Public comments on this item, please come forward. Okay, see no public comments on this item. Do we have any other questions or comments or a motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion.
Okay, moved by Mayor Proton Blom, seconded by Councilman Duffield. Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance, Title 4, ordinance 2022-25, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, adopting zoning code amendment CA 2022-4 to amend sections 20.18.30, 20.38.40, 28, and 28.38.50 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to conform with state law and correct errors related to setbacks. Councilmember Brenner?
Thank you, staff. Next item.
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon. This item is code adoption. So, every three years, the state of California adopts a new set of construction codes. This is your building code, your residential code, and your fire code, and gives cities six months to make any amendments. This set in front of you are minor amendments to both the building code and the fire code. We have a, a very short staff report. We've given you a lot of information. We've done community outreach, got community input, and if there are any questions, you have your Fire Marshal Kevin Bass is here with us, and your Chief Building Official, Tony Tyes, with me. They can answer any questions. We do have one change to page in the ordinance 21-25. We just need to correct the department. It's not Municipal Operations Department. It should be Public Works Department. So, that's our only change to these, this ordinance, to change the title of the department. Happy to answer any questions, or we can do a more thorough presentation if you'd like.
Great. I see no requests. I will make the motion, incorporate that language. Seconded by Councilman O'Neill. Any public comments on this item?
Mayor Muldoon, members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. This is a very big agenda packet item, but the actual staff report is quite brief, and I don't know how many of our good citizens actually bother to read the staff reports for these things, but those who got to page 21-4 may be startled to see what looked like citywide changes in the fire code that would require every resident to check and replace the screens in their ventilation and trim their vegetation around their house and put a one-foot barrier of non-vegetation around their house, and I just wanted to point out, I checked with the Fire Marshal. These are not citywide regulations as it might appear in reading the staff report, but they only, they only apply to selected areas in the high-fire danger zone. I don't know if I got the term correct, but reading the staff report, I thought everybody in Newport Beach would have to change their landscaping, but that is not the case. Thank you.
Any other comments? Just to clarify that issue for those who are watching, anyone have to?
It is for the, our severe fire hazard zones, that they, you know, it's, it's subject to brush fire, so you have to kind of put, kind of a screen on your attic vents, and that prevents the embers from getting into your attic.
And those people know who they are.
And Fire Marshal Kevin Bass will be sending notices to all those residents, and then he's already done a lot of outreach, study session and community presentation on the item.
Perfect. Okay, great. We have a motion on the floor. Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the long ordinance titles. For ordinance 2022-26, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, amending Title 15, building and construction of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to adopt amendments to Chapter 1, Division 2 of the 2022 California Building Code designated as a Newport Beach Administrative Code to adopt the 2022 California Historical Code, the 2022 California Existing Building Code, the 2022 California Green Building Standards Code, and the 2022 California Energy Code to adopt with local amendments, the 2021 International Swimming Code, Swimming Pool and Spa Code, and amend Chapters 1519 Electrical Vehicle Charging and 1550 Flood Plane Management, and ordinance 2022-27, amending Title 9 Fire Code of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to adopt the 2022 Edition of the California Fire Code as set forth in Title 24, Part 9 of the California Code of Regulations with Local Amendments. Councilmember O'Neill, you need to vote, please. The motion carries 6-0.
Nice job. Okay, on to the post-installation review of Mariners' Neighborhood Traffic Calming Measures. Mr. Bryan?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Muldoon. Councilmembers, I think we have a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay.
So, this is a review of the Mariners' Dover Shores Neighborhood Traffic Calming Project. So, we'll start with an overall discussion of the entire neighborhood, and we'll focus back into Highland. So, the history of the entire project goes back to 2019. The traffic study was done for all of the Mariners' Dover Shores neighborhood, and that study was finalized in 2019. There was a petition that was circulated by residents throughout the neighborhood, very large neighborhood, circulated throughout 2020, came back, 60% of the entire neighborhood supported a traffic calming project. On Highland Drive specifically, 70% of the Highland Drive residents supported a project. So, ultimately, we came back to the council in January of 2021 with the full description of the project, which included speed cushions, traffic striping, signing, and the council approved that project, and then in 2021, in the summer, all of the speed cushions, signing, and striping was installed. So, the primary purpose of the project, obviously, we wanted to address the concerns that the residents in the neighborhood had for, for speeding and safety, and so the focus primarily was on the speed cushion installations. We started with a before-and-after study, so our before speeds throughout the neighborhood, there was a range of 31 to 37 miles an hour, depending on the street. When we did the after measurements, after all the cushions and signing and striping, we saw ranges of 25 to 30 miles an hour. So, that, that's very consistent with what we expected, with what national studies would show, something in the range of six to nine mile-an-hour reductions. So, it did result in, in the goal of what we were accomplishing and wanted to do, which was the reduction in speeds in the neighborhood. So, when we looked at locations for speed cushions, and again, throughout the entire neighborhood, we were working with 16 speed cushions for installation, so we had to be very judicious as to where we were going to locate these on all the different streets. So, we had to come up with some criteria to decide, you know, where were the best locations to put them. Obviously, we wanted to look at where the adjacent residents and the signatures that came in on the petitions, where there was support from those adjacent residents. Clearly, we wanted to maximize the ability to control speeds by equally spacing the locations along the roadway. And then, in an effort to try and minimize the speed impacts, we wanted to look at placing them in, on homes that had front yard walls. There are a number of homes in the neighborhood that have front yard walls, or if they did not, some type of significant landscaping which, which actually acts as a noise buffer. So, the Highland Drive, which is the focus of tonight's discussion, the, the exhibit that you have in front of you shows the segment of Highland Drive between Irvine Avenue and Mariners. We had two speed bumps, speed cushions installed on that segment. You can see on this exhibit that the red marks are where the existing speed cushions were installed. The highlighted blue locations were all the residents on that segment that signed the petition in support of the project. It's interesting to note that when the petition went around for the residents to review and sign, the...
So ultimately, we came back to the council in January of 2021 with the full description of the project, which included speed cushions, traffic striping, signing, and the council approved that project. And then in 2021, in the summer, all of the speed cushions, signing, and striping was So the primary purpose of the project, obviously, we wanted to address the concerns that the residents in the neighborhood had for speeding and safety. And so the focus primarily was on the speed cushion installations. We started with a before-and-after study, so our before speeds throughout the neighborhood, there was a range of 31 to 37 miles an hour, depending on the street. When we did the after measurements, after all the cushions and signing and striping, we saw ranges of 25 to 30 miles an hour. So that's very consistent with what we expected, with what national studies would show, something in the range of six-to-nine mile-an-hour reductions. So it did result in the goal of what we were accomplishing and wanted to do, which was the reduction in speeds in the neighborhood. So when we looked at locations for speed cushions, and again, throughout the entire neighborhood, we were working with 16 speed cushions for installation. So we had to be very judicious as to where we were going to locate these on all the different streets. So we had to come up with some criteria to decide, you know, where were the best locations to put them. Obviously, we wanted to look at where the adjacent residents and the signatures that came in on the petitions, where there was support from those adjacent residents. Clearly, we wanted to maximize the ability to control speeds by equally spacing the locations along the roadway. And then in an effort to try and minimize the speed impacts, we wanted to look at placing them on homes that had front yard walls. There are a number of homes in the neighborhood that have front yard walls, or if they did not, some type of significant landscaping, which actually acts as a noise buffer. So the Highland Drive, which is the focus of tonight's discussion, the exhibit that you have in front of you shows the segment of Highland Drive between Irvine Avenue and Mariners. We had two speed bumps, speed cushions installed on that segment. You can see on this exhibit that the red marks are where the existing speed cushions were installed. The highlighted blue locations were all the residents on that segment that signed the petition in support of the project. It's interesting to note that when the petition went around for the residents to review and sign, the study showed conceptual locations, not exact locations, but conceptual locations of where the speed cushions could be installed. This is a photograph of the existing speed cushion at 1911 Highland. This is the one that's been brought to our attention by the adjacent residents with their concerns for noise with the installation. And so the discussion comes back to whether we can relocate that speed cushion, or whether we should remove it, or any other options that we could look at doing for that particular speed cushion. And again, we're trying to address the concerns the residents have for noise, and we have to look at these other criteria that we reviewed, which is, you know, where is their support along the street, you know, whether that criteria was met. In this particular instance, based on the petitions and the signatures we received for today's meeting, in fact, relocating that cushion to another segment of Highland would be a difficult thing to do. Removing the speed cushion would actually revert the speeds back to the pre-project speeds. So we would go back to what the pre-project was and see an increase of six-to-nine miles an hour along that segment of Highland. So based on the history, the project history, the neighborhood support that you saw with the highlighted streets, there's highlighted properties that signed, the criteria we use to locate the cushions, we're recommending that the speed cushion be maintained in its existing location, or we're open to other opportunities.
Mr. Bryan, the complaints about the speed cushion have been noise, correct?
That's correct.
And is that because it's a particular kind of speed cushion?
Well, the speed cushion that was installed is a rubberized cushion as opposed to an asphalt cushion. One thing that the rubberized cushion does have that you won't see on an asphalt cushion is has a small lip at the front of the cushion, so that adds a little, you know, click sound as a car enters the cushion. So that's one primary difference between an asphalt and a rubberized cushion.
If we were to replace this rubberized cushion with an asphalt one that makes less noise, would it have the same, roughly the same impact on the slowing of traffic?
It would have the same impact on the slowing of traffic. You would take away that little, you know, instant click sound as a car entered the speed cushion location. It would, you would still get the noise impacts if there were large vehicles or large trucks or something with a truck with, you know, equipment or something in the back. That would still be there with, whether it was an asphalt or a rubberized cushion.
Well, I will ask later for replaced asphalt, give it a shot, but I definitely think it should stay personally. Mayor Proton Blom?
Thank you, Mayor. I remember the heated conversation we had when we first talked about this. And I remember that the support I gave was specifically because we could remove these ones with a couple of tools rather than having something permanently on the street if the residents all of a sudden decided that this wasn't something that was working out for them. And, you know, as somebody who does travel that neighborhood frequently to early, early mornings when you could drive very quickly through there, I do think that there have been some benefits of slowing people down, and I do think that the mindset of slowing people down is almost as important as the reality of slowing them down. And, you know, as I say that, I think that, you know, kind of creating this idea that it is a neighborhood was something that was great as we had these, you know, these speed bumps going through. But I also have a hard time supporting anything where the group of residents that did want them has come back to us and now said they don't want them. And it kind of puts us in a position, whereas are we forcing this idea upon them because we've decided that this six-to-nine mile-an-hour decrease is more important to us than what they're looking for in their own neighborhoods? I also am not entirely convinced that by removing one of these bumps in an afflicted area, that we're going to immediately see the increase in speed going on in that same area. I think that people will still be running slowly. I think in their mind, they're going to remember that there were speed bumps there. And, you know, and maybe it did work to deter people from taking a quicker and, you know, more personal route through our neighborhoods. So, you know, in this one, I have a really hard time justifying, we brought this up, we put them out because we were trying to listen to the will of the residents. And now, even though, yes, I understand those people did sign the petition the first time, they're now asking us the same thing. Can we remove them? And I think this was the contingency on why I was willing to sign this in the first place, or why I was willing to vote for this in the first place and not put permanent asphalt speed bumps there. One, I'm not a big fan of speed bumps in, you know, and I don't think that's any secret. But I think that this idea of a temporary one, one, fiscally, I don't think the city loses money. I think we can take these bumps, put them in the yard, and maybe if we need to use them somewhere else for a later purpose, well, we have them. And there's not a huge fiscal impact for us. That makes me really, really happy. Two, I think it doesn't really cost us a lot to adjust and move to kind of the will of the residents, especially in the neighborhood, once they've seen the impacts of them. So those are my thoughts on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brenner?
Tony, what percentage of the residents have changed their mind on this? Do we, do you know how much the percentage of support still is?
For this segment of Highland between Irvine and Mariners, I want to say we had about 12 to 15 signatures. So that's what, you know, initially around the speed cushion location, and then more between the speed cushion and Mariners.
And have you done any studies of where we have asphalt speed bumps versus these temporary speed bumps as far as sound goes?
No, no, we've not done any type of noise studies for the different locations. In fact, the only other street outside of when we started putting these throughout Mariners and Dover Shores, there is one other street in the city that we have included the rubberized cushions, and that's Tustin Avenue west of Irvine. So, but we've never done a before-and-after noise analysis.
The asphalt speed bumps on Harborview Drive that I drive every time I come to City Hall, I hated them when they were first installed. We've all gotten used to them, and now, when I, if I roll my windows down, which I've done since this topic came up, I don't, I don't hear much noise at all created by these asphalt speed bumps. So I'm wondering how much of this problem is because of our temporary, and for one thing, they, they don't look as nice either. They, they're kind of, the ones on Tustin, I think, really look kind of cheesy. So I don't, I don't like them from that aspect either, but, and I have one other question. Do you know the name of the young skateboarder who was killed on Highland?
No, I don't. I can't recall the name of the.
I think, I think we need, my daughter and her family used to live on Highland when the babies were very small, and there's a lot of traffic on that street. And I can't imagine that any of us would be more concerned about the inconvenience than about the safety for the young, and there are a lot of young families that live there. So I'm really concerned about us giving up on this when possibly there is a solution that is less noisy and perhaps could be adjusted a little bit. So, because safety is really, in a, in a family neighborhood like this, safety is number one.
Right. The accident that you referred to happened on Commodore, which is the parallel street to Highland. And Commodore also has speed cushions that were installed as part of the project.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman O'Neil?
So going back to the meeting where we approved this, probably worth remembering that we approved this by waiving our own policies because there actually wasn't enough support under our policies to put these in. And so the discussion we were having was, okay, so we're waiving our own policy because there wasn't actually enough support to put these in. And in order to get to that point, one of the things we talked about was, as Councilmember Blom was pointing out, that we'd be putting these in on a temporary side of things so that if someone had one of these put in front of their homes, they'd be able to come in and tell us that they did not want them in front of their homes, and then get moved. And so we're at that point now where we have people who are saying they don't want them in front of their homes. And I've been out there. It is not going to change the noise if we change from the rubberized to the asphalt. There's major problems with trucks going over them, and, I mean, the noise is going to be the noise. And so if we made that assurance to folks, it seems like we should be following through on that assurance. And look, I remember that night. It was a really emotional night. It was brutal because we were talking about this. That accident did not happen because there weren't speed bumps. No one has ever really said that, and I think our PD knows that. And if they really needed to come up and say that, I think we know that. So I think we need to be divorcing what we're talking about here and really make sure that if we're talking about speed and we're talking about safety, we at least recognize that, you know, we're not using a tragedy to kind of make sure that we're, we're talking about something that we had a very specific process for that we decided not to follow. And when people came in, based on their understanding of what we had assured them, we should be following through on that. So I would, I'm going to go ahead and support the removal of this, and if we can find a place to put it in front of a home where someone is not going to complain, fine. But this was always the issue that we talked about that night, and we should be following through on our promises to our residents.
Okay, public comments, please come forward.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Ackley. I live on Highland at 1911, right where the speed bump is really directly in front of our house and directly in front of our neighbor's house at 1912. They couldn't be here tonight because they have three small children, but they did sign our joint comment that was submitted to you all. We appreciate that you, your time and your consideration and that you've put this on the agenda. It's a really important issue to us. We tried to best show you what it's like living with these, I call them speed mats because they're so low-profile, they're really like a mat, by presenting you with video clips. And I don't know if you all had a chance to watch the video clip of the Highland Drive in comparison to Harborview, but if you haven't, I understand it's available tonight. So if anyone hasn't seen it, we can have it teed up and played, is my understanding from talking with Jennifer earlier. Has everyone seen it, or does anyone need to see it?
I have, ma'am. It's public comments, and I'll ask them to play it when you're done.
Okay, great. I appreciate that. Thank you. At the outset, I want to say how much we appreciate that, all the efforts of the city in so many different ways. It's a great place to live. You all, everyone, you know, we've met Mr. Bryan and worked with him, go out of their way to make this a great place to live. And so this is nothing to do with that. We appreciate everything. The Highland video really accurately reflects the noise we hear around the clock when the tires contact the cushions. The commercial vehicle noise can be much louder, but we weren't really able to capture that on the video. It was kind of hard enough to get your phone out, you know, right when cars are going over. But there are really several distinct sound events that we hear caused by these cushions. Vehicles downshifting and braking, tire strike, the load jangle or rattle, and acceleration. So, and this is a lot of what we heard when people prepared the joint comment together. And there are still other neighbors who I think submitted written comments via email that weren't home when our joint comment was going around. So, pardon me, I don't want you to think that just because there are only 12 names on the joint comment, those are the only people that support removal. Other people have advised us that they would be submitting comments and supporting removal. The noise really takes its toll on all of us and can be heard throughout our home and yard. It can disrupt work calls. It has disrupted work calls, Zoom meetings, even with windows closed. I mean, we just, we don't have insulation. We don't have mature trees. We don't have a wall. The four houses directly impacted. One house has trees, our neighbor's across the street, but the trees are so big that the leaves pretty much start almost at the top of the house. So it's not really fair to say they have a green wall or, or something that would help with the noise. Sadly, we do not. Three minutes?
You can wrap up, please?
Okay.
15 seconds?
It's really impacted our lives. We don't sit on our front porch. We just feel like unpeaceful, I guess is the best way I can say it. So we hope that you'll support us and vote for removing these speed cushions. Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't we wait to play the clip until the public comments?
Hi, my name is Lori Lane. I live at 1906 Highland, next door to the speed mat in question. My husband Dave and I have lived in our home happily for 30 years. Next month, we bought our house on Highland Drive with the full knowledge of the street traffic. We knew that it was a primary entryway into the neighborhood and that we also have lived with the speed on Highland. It's always been an issue and a nuisance. We've been attentive to the sporadic discussions about the speed calming measures over the years, and we're always grateful for the city's attention to our concerns. When in 2020, a neighbor brought around a petition reopening the topic, of course we signed. Why would we want to be an impediment to the city's assistance in making some improvements? We reviewed the map of the proposed speed mat locations and were frankly relieved that they were not to be placed in front of our house or very near. And I wondered if the neighbors who were directly impacted had had a specific say in the installation. Well, we felt like the joke was on us when we came home from a few days away to find the speed map installed 65 feet away from our bed, literally, it feels like right outside our bedroom window. Please know that none of us are noise wimps. We live under this flight path. We are used to a lot of noise. We've also lived through the ever-increasing construction traffic due to all the remodels being done in the neighborhood, but the sound from these speed mats is unlike anything else we've experienced. It's nonstop, round-the-clock. There's no curfew like the one at John Wayne. This sound is unpredictable and jarring. We aren't home, my husband and I aren't home all day, as some of our neighbors are, but we experience the worst of it when it's quiet at night or early in the morning when there's no planes to drown out the noise. Tires hitting that mat wake us up or keep us awake many nights. We've lived with it now for over a year and are frankly miserable. I reread the original report and saw that the purpose of the speed calming study was to address quality of life issues. This solution has definitely impacted our quality of life, but not for the better. Does it slow traffic? Well, the study shows that, and the study that was taken four months after the installation indicated that there was an improvement in the average speed. And we do observe that many drivers slow down before or at the bump, but then they speed back up as if to make up for lost time. I suspect that some of the people who are driving slow would drive slow even without the bump. At least I would hope so. I know I do. But there are still plenty of drivers who fly over it so fast it makes our jaws drop, perhaps because there is such a great distance between the next speed mat or stop sign that drivers leave the mat and accelerate way back up. So we get the noise coming and going. If the speed mats were successful in consistently slowing the traffic, I would be so grateful, and I would be more than willing to persevere with the mats. But the speed problem is not completely solved, and the noise, the trip hazard, and the visual clutter from the signs and the riding in the street and the mats are all frankly oppressive. When we neighbors expressed our frustration with the mats to the city, Tony and James came out, kindly came out to discuss the situation. At that meeting, we were told that moving the mats would require approval by the neighbors at the new location, but we were never asked for approval when they were originally placed. So that is inconsistent. At least we didn't understand at the time that the map was conceptual. We thought it was what we were signing on for. I will cut it short, and just to say that we are open to alternatives. We're reasonable people. We appreciate your attention, and we thank you for your compassion and consideration because we just can't take these speed mats anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. If you plan to speak on this item, now is a good time to come forward as well and stand at the opposing podium.
Good evening, City Council members, and thank you for putting this issue on the agenda. My name is Erica Callahan, and I live at 1905 Highland. So fortunately, we have been able to meet with Will O'Neil, and more recent date, traffic engineer Tony Bryan, as well as Deputy Public Works Director James Hulahan. Thank you all again for coming out to meet with us. In our meeting with James and Tony, James acknowledged that the speeding that occurs on our street has been something on the city's radar for a while, and it was the tragedy our community endured in 2020 that expedited some sort of solution, which in turn ended up being these speed mats. While we appreciate the city's swift implementation in response to this tragic event, the trouble still stands, and we are now left with a disruptive reminder that our first attempt to solve this problem has failed. The speed mats do not work, and the noise of every car we prominently hear all day and night are a taunting reminder of that. Most of our bedrooms face the street where we hear the thuds when we are trying to sleep. We can hear them through our homes when we have our windows open to catch a breeze, and we can even hear them in our backyards. We even have a family whose child cannot nap in her own room. We can hear them through our homes when we have our windows open to catch a breeze, and we can even hear them in our backyards. We even have a family whose child cannot nap in her own room because of the thuds will wake her up prematurely from her nap. They are impacting our quality of life. As my next door neighbor Lisa Ackley has brought to your attention, this was not the original planned placement of the speed mat, and it was said by Tony Bryan that any changes would need to be discussed with the residents prior. No one was ever contacted. The other interesting comment from Tony was that if he had it his way, he would have put in double the amount of mats on our street because that's actually what our street needs to make them effective. I am going to be honest, while that might be true for traditional asphalt speed bumps, I do not think that would be the case for these. You would probably have every resident in this room for the noise, it's crazy, you drive everyone nuts. These mats are extremely noisy, and I, unlike asphalt speed bumps. As a mother of a young boy who plays on the street every single day, this brand's safety on our street is a top priority for me. But like we have all observed, and you're more than welcome to sit in my driveway and watch all of the carts speed by, this is a problem. And Lisa, you will see, has brought proof of this. This is a failed attempt, and it's driving us crazy. It disrupts all of our lives, and it's a glaring reminder that we need something different. So we ask that you please remove these speed bumps from our street, and we are hopeful for the next attempt to solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, and again, if you want to speak on this item, please come forward now so we can cut the time. I think it's not going to be that controversial when it comes back to us. Yes, next speaker.
Good evening. I'm Robert Ackley, I live at 1911 Highland Drive. I've got to be honest, when, I was here at the city council meeting when the speed bumps were approved, speed cushions, whatever you call them, and I was, I was excited that they were going in on Highland Drive because I thought it would slow the traffic down. I thought, I thought finally we'd get a solution to all the speeders. They were installed, they weren't the asphalt ones like I thought they would be because the, the study, the 2019 study called for asphalt, they weren't, they weren't asphalt, they were the rubber mats. They put the rubber mats in, it's directly in front of my house, and I can live with that, but it's directly in front of my house, and the first car I saw go over it, it took it at 40 miles an hour. And I'm thinking, how could this be? It didn't slow down at all, it's just 40 miles an hour. And I thought it was a mistake, I thought the guy just didn't know it was there. But then over time, cars still took it fast, maybe some slowed down, but you can take it full speed. And the problem is, I now have speeders that are noisy. I mean, they go by and it's thump, thump, every time, it drives me nuts. It's 20 feet from the front door to my house, and we can hear it in the backyard, it's nonstop, we just hear it all the time. And I'm all for doing what's, what's right for our neighborhood, but this is, this is really asking a lot. It's just nonstop noise, and it's, it really affects the quiet enjoyment of our home. And we hear it inside the house, we hear it in the backyard, they're old homes, raised foundation, latin plaster, so we really are affected by these things. And it, it just doesn't seem to stop the speeders like I thought they would. I signed the petition believing it would be asphalt, and, and they're not asphalt, they're, they're the rubber ones that frankly, they look like they belong in a, a container storage yard in, in San Pedro or something, not on our street. I don't know where these things came from. But addressing, you know, the, the fact that they were put in, they were bolted in because if there were noise complaints, they could be removed, all right? I'm respectfully requesting that they be removed because the noise is, is really bothersome for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please come forward. Yes, yes, please come forward, and again, if you want to speak on this item, please come to the front now, yes. Okay, great.
If we have the speed bumps removed, then what are we going to do about the speed? Because we remove the speed bumps, it's going to increase the speed, and it's going to increase the noise. So what can we do if we have to move the speed bumps? What can we do for that? Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, any other speakers? Okay. Let's watch the video, we're all dying to see it. Okay, just give her a sec, technical difficulties, yeah.
It's really quiet.
Yeah, it's, what's a complaint about? The post office, oh my gosh. Only time then a hurry is in front of your street. Well, it, I mean, first off, Mr. Harp, could we, aside from this Highland, oh, here we go, it works. Here we go, yeah. So, well, I think, I'd like to bifurcate this if possible. Is now the appropriate time for us to request that all the ones that are settled and acceptable in the neighborhood be turned to asphalt, aside from the one on Highland? Because is that okay for the sake of this agenda item, for the Brown Act and everything? Yeah, so I'll let my, I'd like to field comments on this specific location that these residents submitted on and what could be done, but I would propose that for all the other locations, if we're, if the noise issue has not become a squeak of wheel in certain neighborhoods, that those rubber ones be converted asphalt, so that they enjoy a quieter area, and then right now, we can talk about what to do about the, the specific one. That's, that's kind of what I'm, I'm hoping to do. But, okay, Mayor Professor Blom.
Thank you, Mayor. My, my question's back to Public Works then, if, if that was the conversion, what kind of costs are we looking at to, because I think that was part of the original conversation, that we were willing to pay a little more for the rubber so that we could take them out rather than pay again for the asphalt?
So we used to say a speed bump would run you about $5,000. That was years ago, with inflation, we're probably guessing between seven and 10 per speed bump. The original installation cost is about $151,000, the project you approved to put in the 16 speed bumps and edge striping.
Hundred and fifty grand. You know, I'd be minimal to removing the ones in front of the area where we had the complaint and then kind of field it with residents and the rest of the neighborhood as those complaints come about, but, you know, it's kind of my suggestion.
Okay. Councilman Brenner.
Tony, were there any studies done of the reduction in traffic on these streets after the speed bumps? I know on Harborview Drive, there was a lot fewer people use that shortcut after the speed bumps were put in. Was there any study here to see whether there was a reduction?
No, no, the focus was really on collecting the speed data and not so much the volume data.
Okay, all right. I would support Kevin's motion to install the asphalt ones where we can and remove the plastic one where it's causing the most problem.
Thank you, Councilman Avery.
Yeah, like everybody, I'm, almost everybody, I'm a fan of, you're right, peacefully enjoy your home, and clearly, this is not, the folks that are being impacted by this are not enjoying the peaceful, quiet of their home, which is necessary for, for health and mental well-being. And that's why we have single-family homes, and we have the neighborhoods we do. A lot of work's gone into it, and then every now and then, we give something a try, it doesn't work. So I totally support the removal of these particular ones, and I think we need to be careful about how much we're going to spend on other items, putting in asphalt, speed bumps, so we've got the ones that are out there. I, you know, I go on 16th Street, Costa Mesa, right off Tustin, and there's those speed bumps there, and they're fine as long as you're slow, going slow. And, but I don't think they're as noisy as these, and we don't obviously hear complaints because those folks are in Costa Mesa, but, I mean, there's a financial side to this with this many asphalt speed bumps around, and the cost per, it's amazing to me that I would just get out there and throw some asphalt around and make a bump, and it could be a couple hundred bucks, you know? Today, it's a little different, so, but I'm definitely supportive of this particular removal of the speed bumps, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman O'Neill.
Yeah, I was kind of curious, the thought behind, instead of leaving the ones that are there right now where people haven't been complaining, the thought process behind replacing those with asphalt, given the cost, but that's why I was, I was kind of curious what your thought process was on that.
I just, I just figured that they're probably similar, sediment's just not as organized. Okay, well first, let me just, great question. For me, if we're going to remove this one on Highland, I'd be curious if anyone else would want an asphalt one in front of their house or not. One parent might say, hey, I like to slow down measure, and I like to have an asphalt one, but not a rubber one. It seems that this rubber one does not have a good placement, apart from the community, and it's too loud. Is there a consensus on removing and seeing if you can find another one at, at all, or?
Oh, sure, yeah. I mean, I, I think that if there's someone down the street on this particular street who would like it in front of them, great, I, I don't, I don't begrudge that, I think it'd be worth talking to some of the folks. And also, by the way, that lady that came earlier to talk about saying, hey, I'm willing to have one in front of my house, she should probably be reached out to as well and see if we can work with her on that. So I, that's why I was trying to understand the, the cost actually kind of surprised me a little bit.
Yeah.
So we've already got the, we've got the, we've got the speed bumps where they are, I, I mean, it's been six months, and no one's, if people haven't complained about those specific ones right now, I'd, I'd be more inclined to leave them there, but, but that's why I wanted to ask the thought process on the asphalt side.
Right, there could be some that no one cares about at all, so maybe, you can work with these residents, find alternative location if there is one for an asphalt, and if there's other complaints about ones that are asphalt, it's within the sign authority, perhaps you can just switch it out without bringing it back because the noise complaints are probably legitimate. As Councilman O'Neill says, if there's no noise complaints at all, which maybe the majority of them actually are, then just leave it as is and save the, save the, the cost.
That's a good idea.
Right, I mean, the only thing I could add to that is that we did install 16 cushions throughout the entire neighborhood and received two noise concerns out of the 16. So the other 14 seem to be working for various reasons, you know, they've got a, a front wall on their yard, et cetera. So it's the two locations, one on the Dover, which the lady brought up earlier, and then this location on Highland.
Okay, well, that's a good sign then, sounds like I was overreacting.
Those are good percentages.
Yeah.
I'll take that percentage if we have to remove two and keep 14.
Councilman Brenner.
I just wanted to suggest that possibly when we put in these speed cushions, that it, as policy, be temporary, so that we, down the line, plan ahead for asphalt to be replaced, to replace these once we know where they're going to be, because they really are cheesy looking. I mean, they don't look like Newport Beach at all. And so if we could just, you know, plan ahead and say that we use those cushions temporarily until we have a, a location settled, and then that we will gradually plan, budget for, and, and encourage the replacement by the asphalt, because they're much nicer looking and they are quieter.
But do we have a policy now?
I don't believe we have a policy on asphalt. I, I just want to note too, I mentioned a cost for those speed bumps, that was, you know, an individual, we tend to do one-on-one. If we did a whole group, as the council says, go replace the 14 that are out there with asphalt, we'd probably get a better price, there's going to be some level, but, you know, magnitude of scale. So just to calm the concerns, it's going to be over expensive, but at this point, you thoughts on that?
Right, I mean, I think at this point, we'll come back to 14 out of 16 is a pretty good percentage rate, and, and we'll address Highland, and we'll come back as the lady came in earlier and, and address Dover. The, the only difference with the Dover speed cushion was, it's already been relocated from where it initially was to where it is today, and now they're asking that it be, go back to or close to where the initial spot was, so a little bit different on, on Dover.
Yeah, the Dover thing, I did think it's interesting though, that it might be a, a part-time resident, not that we are prejudiced against part-time residents, but that's interesting as opposed to the whole block that's in front of us, that's, that's a pretty organized neighborhood, not one person. Yes, Councilman Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is my district, and I've been involved in this from the start, and I, we all, all want to try to, to calm this speeding around, but I, I used to, I think it's, the biggest element up there is the NAC. And all of us, early in the morning, trying to get there because we're late. Right? And I, I'm always trying to sleep in, so I found myself speeding around there at 6:00 in the morning, sorry. But, so I was very involved in trying to help these, these poor neighbors, what can we do? And so we did this, and I, Councilman O'Neill brings up a good point, we, we were going to be flexible, we were going to try this, and if things didn't work out, we were going to be flexible, so that's what I want to be. I want to be flexible, and I'm hearing what we need to do, and I want to do that. And let's move on, and let's keep trying, and if it's, if the next one doesn't work, let's try something else, because that place is, has got a lot of children running around, and it's an awesome place to raise kids and families, and we got to figure this out. So whatever it takes, let's keep, keep working on it.
Agreed, so it sounds like the consensus is to remove the one in question that's in front of us, explore the one on Dover, whether, what happens with there, and if someone comes with a complaint, as long as it's not a huge number of them, we're okay with just a single one or two just being replaced with asphalt without bringing it back. So do you need a vote from us this evening? Just?
I don't believe we do, this was a receive and file, but we did get your direction, and I think that's what we're looking for, and we'll keep working with the neighborhoods and that, so we'll, we'll put the work order in to remove that one and start working on Dover and listen for any other concerns and complaints out there.
Thank you, and we, we know how tough it is too, thank you for your patience, like back and forth and traffic and engineers and people, so thank you.
You know, if, you don't mind, Mayor, I could just make one statement, Mr. Bryan's been a dedicated service for 26 years to the city, and he's been our traffic engineer for 15 years. Last week, he told me he'll be retiring this December, so we're going to be losing a stern face that can deal with these tough issues, ongoing traffic issues, but I'm thankful for all your effort on this and, and all the other efforts that you've done in the city, and we're going to miss Tony when he retires, but good luck in that.
Certainly, well, you're very com-
Thank you, Mr. Bryan.
Tony, well, thank you, very competent and a gentleman, and if you'd like to say something, you're welcome to, and we have no Rolex for you.
Okay. No, I mean, I think what you learn over the years as a traffic engineer, and I've heard, you know, neighbors recognize, you grow a thick skin, is a good way to say it. But, you know, I've always enjoyed working with the neighborhoods, it, it's been amazing to work here at the city, many, many staff members that I've worked with, and many council members that I've worked with over the years, and it's always been, you know, you know, very rewarding, what we do. So I want to thank you as a council, and, and looking forward to, to our retirement.
Great, thank you so much, Tony, congratulations. Thank you. Okay, on to the next item, item number 23, staff.
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon, and city council members. Simone Jurges, your community development director, and with me is Lauren Wooding Whitlinger, she's a real property administrator. So the agenda item this evening is the purchase and sale agreement for a property up in the airport area, 1201 Dove Street, and we've been working on this for almost over six months. We're looking at this property as a potential opportunity for the future police station. I'm going to hand it off to Lauren here, and she's going to go ahead and do a presentation, and what we're going to ask of the council at the end is really to, to agree to, to enter into this purchase and sale agreement, and it's really the beginning of the process, it's not the end of the process. It is the due diligence phase that we're going to ask the council to, to allow us to go forward with. It's 120-day diligence and a 30-day close after that. It allows us to kind of kick the tires with the property, do the appraisal reports, and really inspect this property, and look and see if this is the opportunity that we want for the city, for the future police station. So I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Ms. Whitlinger.
Thank you.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. As Simone mentioned, we have in front of you for your consideration this evening, a purchase and sale agreement for the property at 1201 Dove Street. This is being looked at as a replacement for the police department headquarters, which is currently located on Santa Barbara Drive. The city acquired the Santa Barbara property from the Irvine Company in 1973. The building was constructed on a site that is shared with Fire Station Number Three. The facility is slated for replacement in the capital improvement plan within the next 10 years. And Public Works did an evaluation of the existing facility and the department's future needs, and determined that a new facility should be about 73,000 square feet to accommodate the department's expanded operations. As, as Simone mentioned, we've kind of anticipated this project coming forward in the next 10 years and have kept an eye out for any available properties in, in the city that meet the anticipated out for any available properties in, in the city that meet the anticipated needs. Um, there are not a lot of properties available that are three acres or larger, and there are not currently any properties for sale in the airport area that meet the criteria. The owners of 1201 Dove Street approached the city with an off-market deal, and the current property is, is developed as a six-story office building. Uh, it sits on an approximately 3.59 acre site and is 84% occupied with 21 tenants. The property is professionally managed, and the property manager is actively leasing the property. So why are we looking at purchasing this property now? Uh, this is a strategic, uh, plan to purchase and hold the property for the 10 years. Uh, aside from having a willing seller and this particular property having the characteristics that we're looking for for a replacement facility, there is a strong demand for properties in the airport area. Um, and this particular property actually has a, a positive cash flow of approximately $1.2 million a year. Um, it should also be noted that the value of the existing police department property in about 10 years will have an anticipated value of 55 million.
So let me, let me add to that. Um, so a strategic plan for the council to consider would be, this is a, a land bank deal in a sense, buy this property at 1201 Dove Street. It has a positive cash flow that will offset the cost of purchase. Um, and Lauren will show that the cost of the purchase is 30 million. In the next year, 10 years, we anticipate $15 million of, uh, net positive income from the property. And for the future, for the future council, if they're interested in entitling the existing Santa Barbara property for our police department, we believe that it can gain a value of $55 million based on just comparables that we have currently.
So what happens if we buy the property and change our mind in 10 years? Uh, with the expected income from the property at 1201 Dove Street, um, and that increasing over the next 10 years, uh, at a five, five cap, uh, the value of that property will, will be approximately 52 million. So we could sell it and, um, generate revenue back to the city. So the agreement terms that we've negotiated are a purchase price of 30 million, 500,000. Uh, there would be two earnest money deposits of 1% each, uh, that would be applicable to the purchase price. The due diligence period, as Simone mentioned, would be 120 days, and we would anticipate closing 30 days after acceptance of the condition of the property. The fees and closing costs would be shared between the seller and the city, and then the city would cover the cost of a, a owner's title policy. During the 120-day due diligence period, the city would conduct a variety of, uh, condition assessments of the property, both the, the building and the site, and would also look at and review the lease agreements and, uh, for all of the tenants, and, uh, review the cash flow and expenses for the property to verify that information, uh, and also conduct an appraisal of the property. So how do we anticipate paying for this? With the purchase price and all of the expenses, the cost of 30,775,000 would be covered by the fiscal year 21, 22 surplus, uh, money from the facilities financing plan fund and the capital improvement fund. Uh, the property, as I mentioned, is currently professionally managed. Uh, the property manager is paid a fee of 2.5% of the gross rental income for the property, and their contract expires in August of 2023. The city would anticipate, uh, issuing an RFP for a new management contract, and that management contract would be brought back to council at a future meeting for its consideration. Uh, with the approximate annual in, income of $1.2 million per year, um, the NOI is expected to increase both with new leases and increases year over year, uh, that are built into the existing leases. More on those income projections with the 1.2 million NOI, um, assuming an occupation, occupancy of 90% or so, um, the anticipated NOI for the property for the 10-year hold period would be about $15 million. Um, if we were to hold it for longer, if the property wasn't developed in that 10-year period and we held it longer and operated it as an office building, uh, we could anticipate revenues of, of closer to $25 million. According to CoStar, um, the current projections for the, the future, um, economic, uh, you know, we're looking at a dip in the market next year, possibly a, a small recession. Um, beyond that, the average, uh, rent growth for the, the market, the Newport Beach market and the Orange County market is anticipated to be 2% to 3% per year. The vacancy rate for properties in Newport Beach are relatively low, um, for properties like this, uh, property, which is a three-star property. Uh, the vacancy rates average around between 8 and 9%, which is actually better than the, the citywide or the county-wide average. The recommendation in front of you this evening is to authorize the city manager and the city clerk to enter into the purchase and sale agreement and approve it, approve the budget amendment. And if that does get approved, then staff would, uh, proceed with getting the purchase and sale agreement executed, open escrow, pay the deposit, conduct the due diligence that we've outlined, pay the second deposit, and then close escrow thereafter. Available for any questions if you have them.
Great. Thank you. Nice presentation. Any questions from the dais? Yes, Councilman O'Neil.
Yeah. So on that last slide, um, the, so I suppose the caveat is that conduct due diligence review, and if something comes up in the due diligence review that does not make sense, that obviously not pay the second deposit and not close escrow.
That's correct. The, you know, our due diligence is 120 days, and we can cancel during that 120-day period. So if any of the due diligence items comes back to us that we are not comfortable with, then we would, um, communicate with the city manager and recommend to, to cancel the escrow.
Okay.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Blom.
I had a close friend say to me, um, it's pretty amazing that Newport Beach chooses to fund the police rather than defund the police. And I think that's, uh, a pretty great statement that we have to have around here. So thank you guys for, for entering into this.
Any public comments? Uh, so you know, the requests to speak, sorry, I thought someone's requesting to speak over there. Any public comments on this item? Please come forward.
Mayor Muldoon, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Um, for those who pay attention to the council agendas, it appears that you held several closed sessions discussing the negotiation about the property at this same address, but it always struck me as unusual that there's been prior to tonight, and even tonight, no public discussion of the desirability of moving the police headquarters from its current location relatively close to the city hall. But that's not quite true because there was a discussion a number of years ago, and our previous city manager had been promoting the idea that the logical location, if we needed to move the police headquarters, was to the Corporation Yard on Superior. And there were conceptual plans that were presented to a former council for possibly consolidating the police department there. I don't know if that was a good or a bad idea. Uh, it, since the city is not normally in the landlord business, even if we think a property might be profitable in the long run, it would seem like that discussion should have happened before we're deciding whether to buy this particular property or not. And my thoughts on moving either to the Corporation Yard or to the airport area is that, in my mind, it creates a uncomfortable disconnect between city hall here, where people expect city functions to be going on, and where our police department is, like it was somehow a separate entity. And if you want to go check on a police matter, you have to go to a different part of town than where normal city hall functions are. Uh, I'm a little uncomfortable with that. And it also locating at these remote, remote locations doesn't seem to be very consistent with our idea that we're trying to reduce vehicle miles traveled. It would seem to me, not a traffic engineer, it seemed the police cars have much further to go than if they were located and emanating from a central location. So I'm not sure the idea of moving is the greatest one in the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any other public comments?
Seeing none. I remember eight years ago, the first forum we had, when the first forums we attended, they asked me the question, where should the police station go? And I said, I don't know. And I was trying to be humble, but also I really didn't know. And I actually think this is the best location, given the proximity to both sides of the bay. Um, I just, I think we're in for a large correction in the commercial real estate market, and so I'm just going to be dissenting for the sake of timing. But I think that staff has picked a good location. And my colleagues have worked hard to get what could, could be a, a good deal. So any other, uh, requests to speak? If not, maybe there'll, there'll be a motion.
Make a motion on this one.
Okay, motion by Mayor Proton Blom to approve, and a second by Councilman O'Neil. Let's vote.
With Mayor Muldoon voting no, the motion carries 5-1.
Thank you, staff. Okay, we are almost at the finish here. Madam Clerk, announcements for motive, or motions for reconsideration?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to reconsider? Okay, seeing none. We are adjourned.